Welcome, everyone. Can we all please rise for the pledge?
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Hammond?
Here.
Vice President Daley?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Trustee Hedlund?
Here.
And Trustee Clements is absent.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's meeting. I'm gonna start with some comments regarding the New York State School Boards Association Annual Convention. Jen, myself, Dr. Bernante, and Peggy had the opportunity to attend this year's event in Manhattan. It was their 99th year. It was exciting. It was a good opportunity for us board members and Dr. Bernante to co-mingle with schools as far north as Syracuse to Long Island. And we had opportunity to continue to learn as a school board member, as superintendent. They had a variety of different programs throughout the three days. Would you like to add any?
What'd you go to?
I went to opioids. We had the opportunity to hear Commissioner Aleah speak. We also had the opportunity to hear John Quinones from ABC.
Oh, really?
Yes.
And what would you do?
The what would you do? Ethics and the school systems and... Uh, what else did we do?
Well, I went to the school law seminar, which-
Because there's nothing better.
Is a full day of excitement. But it was on the Thursday from 8 till 4. And it was one kind of legal issue after another and discussion of really pertinent stuff, like the new sexual harassment-
Yep.
-law, the new, I'm blanking on the name right now, but the new union, what's that one called?
Janus.
The Janus case, the new Janus case, security stuff.
Interesting.
So, I think maybe it was five different, like, topics, and they just spent the day going over them and how it pertained to us, the changes, things like that. So, that was really interesting. I mean, it was, you know, it was a commitment of a day, but it was interesting stuff and really, all really relevant. And then I also got a chance to go to some mental health in the public schools, which was really interesting. It was highlighting a school district in Housick Falls, which is outside of the Albany area. And this school has just, like, completely shifted to, like, all mental health services all the time. I mean, they have pet therapy dogs in the schools, art therapists on staff, equine therapy. I mean, it's, and this is like a rural semi-low-income school district. So, I mean, they really showed, you know, where it can go. And so, that was really interesting and inspiring, for sure. And then I saw, what else? Oh, I went to a workshop on e-steam, at which at first I thought was kind of like, oh, how many letters, you know, can they get in this acronym? Like, what is it going to become? But e-steam is now empathy with science, technology, et cetera, et cetera. The idea being, at first I was a little skeptical, but the idea is putting a "Y" behind what we're doing. And that actually was really, really interesting. And it was run by the Yorktown Heights School District and Superintendent. And that was, I found that to be really interesting to see, you know, I feel like sometimes we talk about these two different tracks, like, some people are all about, like, technology, robotics, coding, and then some people are all about, like, you know, mental health and music and whatever. And it seems like they're two diverging tracks, and this e-steam idea was finding a way, I felt like, to bridge them. So, I found that interesting. I also went to a seminar about childhood sexual abuse and preventing it in the schools. And there were some, you know, those numbers are just startling and sobering. So, we talked about that. And I went to something about communication, which was interesting because it was a superintendent and a board president-
Same.
-of the same school district, talking about their process with communication, which I thought was really interesting, given especially what, you know, we've experienced as of late. And I was so impressed by their honesty. You know, I feel like sometimes we try to kind of keep those issues under the rug and try to not, you know, not talk about them or not let the public know we're talking about them. And they just talked about their process, where the board president was like, yeah, so-and-so was, you know, he'd send out this email, and this email said X, Y, and Z, and nobody knew what he was talking about. And the superintendent was like, yeah, well, this was why I sent it out, and this is what I thought. And, you know, and they were just very honestly talking about their communication issues. And so, I really appreciated their candor.
Was there a handout with that one?
Yeah. Well, you know, they really, they had somebody kind of come in and help them work through it. But what I was really struck by was everybody seemed willing to work through it.
Right.
And I really saw that as the key.
Right.
That the superintendent was receiving this feedback and was like, okay, I want to get better at this, so let's really talk about how I can get better at this. And was really using it as, like, a problem-solving opportunity, instead of, like, a criticism that couldn't be dealt with. So, it was really interesting. I feel like we all had also some time to spend some time together, which is really nice, you know, team building.
I also attended a few of the social-emotional workshops. One, which I found very interesting, was peer groups acting as liaisons with social workers. I actually passed along the handout, and if anybody else is interested, I can pass it on to Dr. Bernante.
Sure.
But it's something that we, I think, couldn't act here. And actually, at one point, we were almost at that point where everybody had a dot, if you remember-
Yes.
-connected to another individual. And then that system kind of just went away. But really, this is all student-driven, with the help of their social worker. This was presented by a school in Long Island, Hop Dog, Long Island. They've been doing it for 21 years, and they found this to be very successful. So, maybe it's something that-
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's what kind of comes out of these conferences, is that these little, you get these little moments of inspiration or moments of like, oh, well, maybe we could-
How was that with the whole?
Yeah. And, you know, they just get you thinking a little bit differently, which is so great. And something I noticed, so I went to this conference, they have them annually, and I went to this conference six years ago when I was first on the board. And maybe I wasn't looking for it as much as I am now, but the programming has shifted, in my opinion, really dramatically towards more mental health seminars. I mean, every day of the conference, there was multiple ones to choose from, whether it was mental health or drug use or... And I thought that was a really striking shift, and I found it to be really positive, that at least the right conversations, in my opinion, the right conversations are happening at leadership levels in education. So, I found that to be really-
Awareness and recognition of that as a component of a child's education.
Yeah.
Which is something the school needs to deal with.
That's right. And so, for me, that was a shift, unless I wasn't paying attention along the years. And this year, I was just really paying attention to it, but I think it's been a shift.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
If there really were handouts, I really would. I mean, that wasn't a slate for any of us. That was like, you know, communications is a big thing on our goals this year. Let's use it. Let's look at it and see.
Yeah, well, all of the seminars that were presented and all of the handouts for every seminar is on NISBA's-
Oh, it is? Okay.
Website.
All right.
Is that correct?
Yes, but I'm not sure if everybody had access or just the attendees.
I think so.
Is it?
I'll take a look.
Take a look. But if not, we can forward, you know, forward it over if you, for some reason, don't have access.
All right. Because it does sound like there's lots of good stuff there that we could use.
There was lots of great stuff. Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Peggy actually attended the business meeting portion. I didn't get to-
She was voting.
She was voting for us. She was representing us. I didn't get a chance to follow up with her.
No, me neither.
But, sure.
But we got an email saying, like, these are the NISBA's voting-
Right.
-results or whatever they call it. Well, Peggy was a part of that.
Exactly.
Raising her hands, you know, voting for us.
All right, good.
All right. Just a reminder that the next business meeting will be held on Monday, November 19th, at 7:00 PM. It's a Monday due to the Thanksgiving break. We're holding it Monday instead of Tuesday. Okay, so with that said, Dr. Bernante?
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. I echo your thoughts as well as Ms. Daley's regarding the NISBA convention. It's great to spend some time together, and I think one of the, some of the best workshops and sessions are those where you're sitting and what other districts are doing or how they're approaching the very issues that you're approaching as well. And it's good to form relationships and connections with other school administrators and school board members who are having often the very same conversations that we are. And it's a good reminder of that. And if I have the figure correct, I think there were over 2,000 attendees this year, which is pretty incredible when you think about that. Additionally, Jen and I had the chance to go down to Westchester last night for the Lower Hudson Council Dinner, Board Superintendent Dinner. So, we had the chance to sit with some friends from Putt Valley and also from Brewster, if I'm not mistaken. We were at a table together, so it looks like they tried to keep the Putnam folks together, which was great. But again, had some great conversation, and we had listened to John Morrow, who was giving the speech, who worked for PBS, if I'm not mistaken, has a couple of books that he's authored. He was an education reporter, and I enjoyed our time there as well.
Yes.
So, it's always a good time. Time spent with our board and our superintendent is good time spent, so I appreciate that. Just a few announcements for me. One, our SPO started, and I'm pleased to report that. We were notified by the Putnam County Sheriff's Office that they had an SPO ready for us, and he was ready, like, right away. So, they notified us, and he was ready to start within a day or two. So, John Segnant started with us, I believe, last week or the week before. We have, we've had an extra week between meetings, so my timing may be a little off. But John brings a wealth of experience to our school system. He is a retired Department of Corrections Officer in Putnam County, and he was previously in the Maia PAC school system. So, he has experience being in a school setting. And he has, at least his word said, he absolutely loves Hal Dean and loves being here. It certainly looks like he's enjoying his time here. Deputy Shelters has been a good assistant to him, or of good assistance to him, escorting him around campus and familiarizing him with the facilities and our routines and our procedures. And overall, I'd say he's off to a great start. Realizing that we have a new, a few new folks onboard, John, obviously, Nabeel Botros, our Director of Facilities, and we're anticipating a new Director of PPS in the coming weeks. I reached out to the PTA, and we're gonna, the PTA is going to assist in sponsoring meet and greet with the new members of our school community, especially those who are at more of an administrative level. And we're looking to do so next month, ideally, so we have the Director of PPS in place or at least named and approved by the board by that point. And we'll look to do it prior or after a PTA meeting, so folks in the community can come out and meet some of the individuals who are on campus and get to know them a little bit better. And also, perhaps stay for our PTA meeting, which would be nice as well. So, we look forward to that next month.
And just a quick question on the SPO. What's the, it was explained at one point, I've totally deleted from my head. What is, what are the hours for, how does the scheduling work for it?
I'm actually glad you brought that up. I made a note here to speak to that, and I did not. His hours are 10 to 5.
Okay. All right, so he has those sort of later.
Yes, so he's on swing shift, whatever that may be. But it is a, it's a seven-hour day.
Yeah.
And I talked to the county about this, and this isn't anything that John directly has control over, it's the work agreement or the contract between our district and the county. Those hours are not flexible. So, if we have a time where we want to shift him to 12 to 7 or whatnot, that's not how that works.
Okay, all right.
So, we need to be wary of that, and we have to plan accordingly. And that's why partly I'm glad we kept a good relationship with U.S. Security Associates, because we may have times where we want to bring someone in for a couple of hours because we have evening events going on, whatever it may be, and we still have the ability to utilize them as well. But his hours are 10 to 5, and that's that. So, that's just something we should be aware of and consider if we find that there is something in the evening that we want to cover.
So, how does it work when there's a game, a basketball game, a volleyball game, that's not covered?
Well, we can choose to bring someone in to cover it. We cannot flex him during that day.
We can't flex him.
Nope. And, or we cannot cover, some games, some events, we may just have a police officer on campus for.
Right.
We do that with some sporting events if we expect a large crowd. That generally is just a good practice. But we may find that it's an event that we normally would not have a sheriff on campus for. So, in those situations, we may feel we don't need one, and we can have the door open and just have people coming in and out to a basketball game. Or we may feel like we might want to bring in a greeter or access the greeter services through U.S. Security and have them come in to monitor access during those times.
Well, we have chaperones at every game.
We do.
So, that's something to note. And also, I think when we were discussing the SPO last year, we thought that it'd be good that he be here during the lunch hours.
Right.
So, that was the other reason why the 10 o'clock start.
Right. But we still have that issue that the door down there is-
After 5, most of the elementary programs are gone.
Correct.
Right.
We do have chaperones at every game. So, it's something I hear what you're saying.
Right.
But it's-
So, would the practice be that after 5 o'clock, that door in, toward the cafeteria door is just unlocked?
Well, we have an option, either we lock it, and it's locked, the building's closed, and someone, whoever's on the inside of the building, the building's closed, essentially. I wouldn't even say someone who's in the building has to allow access to someone's in, we're just saying the building's closed. Or it's unlocked because there's an event going on, and we're allowing people to come in and out of the building because of that event, and, you know, they're accessing the gymnasium or they're accessing another part of the building. Or there could be an event going on upstairs, let's say, a parent event, a back-to-school night, where the front door's open and it's fine, people are coming in and out of the building. I think the question and the standard we have to kind of sort out is, what is the expectation for when we will have someone monitoring who's coming in and out of the building? Generally, I would say, and I'm not saying I can, my mind can be changed, but when we have a back-to-school event like we had in September where parents are coming in to meet their child's teacher, the front door should be open. We wouldn't expect people to be going through a sign-in process. I think it's an understanding that the building is not secure during that time. We have adults coming in, they're coming for an event between the adults in the building, and they're not going through the sign-in process. For a sporting event, I would say, again, that I would think the reasonable assumption is the building is not secure during those times. We're not seeking to monitor who's coming in and out like we would do during regular school hours, no different than if there were a football game down at the field, that people would be coming in and out, and we're not, we're not signing them in and out. So, a basketball game, I think, would be, would follow a similar logic in that it's understood that you're coming into the building. Certainly, we're gonna have certain points of the building closed down where we would say you're not supposed to be upstairs, wandering the hallways, your activity should be limited to the athletic corridor if you're here for a basketball game, but that we wouldn't have someone necessarily going through a sign-in process. If we have two events going on, where we have a basketball game going on, and maybe we have a student event going on upstairs, I don't know our calendar that well yet, because I haven't lived it, but if we have a situation like that going on, I would lean towards having someone who would remain at the end of the hallway, just to make sure that the individuals who are going upstairs are here for legitimate business, and the individuals who are here for the athletic event are obviously making their way into the autumn.
And what about aftercare? Those kids are here until 6, right?
I was at 6.
I'm not, my initial impression is that the aftercare program has a responsibility to pair kids with families at the conclusion of the program.
Right, but that family has to come into the building, so if we lock that door down there, where do they come in?
I don't know if they have to come into the building. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say so. There's no reason why an aftercare program couldn't walk them out of the building once the program concluded.
But they all leave at different times.
I'd have to, I don't know how, I'd have to look into that.
They do. I'm sure they do.
But I don't know, the aftercare program is not run by us.
No, it's through the rec department.
So, I do think a question we have to ask, and I've just lived this in previous work, whose responsibility is it to monitor the door for an outside organization's use of our facilities, even though it's our kids and we feel that connection to them? Does that become our responsibility-
Right.
...to monitor that and to pay for that?
Right.
I think we have to be wary of that.
Right.
And manage it, you know? Whose responsibility is it to manage that process?
And set the expectations with the outside. This, if you're gonna be using our facilities, here's the expectation.
Yeah, I think that's the route we may, we should go down.
Right. Where are they meeting this year? Do you know? Are they down here or upstairs?
They're up in the makerspace.
In the makerspace, which means somebody's, the parents have got it committed. It's not like we can let the kids- In the library.
Are they? Because we needed the makerspace for classroom. After school. Well, they, we couldn't keep moving them because they have to get-
Yeah, there's some clearances they have to get signed off on. It has to have a certain amount of space.
They have to get a certain space assigned to them, and because we need the makerspace for classroom space this year, they're in the elementary library.
Okay. They're in the elementary library. So, yeah.
Well, once it gets figured out, we might want to have some sort of, like, schedule that we could post on the door, you know what I mean? Because it is a little confusing if you walk to the door and the door is locked, and you're coming in, so like, tonight, 5:30, 6 o'clock, you're coming in to see the rest of your girls' basketball practice, and the door's locked. You know, it would be nice to have a note there saying, "The building is locked after 5:00 PM," if that's what's decided, I think.
And I think it's just communication. So, we all got the communication from the PTA regarding an upcoming meeting, and they did note to please use this-
Right.
-door.
Right.
Because the others will be locked. So, I think we just have to keep the communication.
Right, but it's not, it's not always like that. Like, today, there was the book fair after school, and you could go in the front door.
Okay.
Right? Because they were trying to make it welcoming, so you can just go in the front door.
Right.
But the understanding, I thought, was after 3:15, you gotta go in through the cafeteria door. But, you know, it's a book fair, and so-
Right.
The principals are, and they were there to greet you, you know? Ms. Silke was there, Dr. Silke was there, like, to greet people and to show them where to go, and, which I thought was, you know, nice and appropriate, actually, but I didn't know that that was where we were supposed to go. You know what I mean?
Right.
So, there's just, we just gotta figure out what the consistency is, figure out what the rule is, and then maybe stick with it or something.
Right. Consistency will matter.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Our friends from PNW Bosse's, who facilitated our winter retreat, also inquired, I'm sorry, our summer retreat, inquired us to if the board would like to engage in a winter retreat, which, there was a brief discussion about that when we met this summer. So, I told Mr. McCarthy and Dr. Allen that I would check in with the board to see if that's something that we're interested in. Their schedules book pretty quickly, so they're often booking a month in advance. So, Lynn and John were great, they checked in again with me a couple of weeks between meetings there, we have an extra week. I'll be sure to get back to you after Tuesday night, if that's something the board is interested in. I would say we would probably best be served looking at a three to four-hour commitment, and I can have someone from our office reach out to you just to get a sense for what your schedule is through January, early February, and seek to identify a few times that work for the group, and then to ask you to hold a date or two, if that's something the board's interested in.
I think it's in our best interest. We had the two part in our minds, anyway. And what I had mentioned to Dr. Bernante is that we probably want to do this before we get into the thick of budget season, so January or February is probably-
When's the mid-year district goal progress workshop?
It's right around that time. I think it's the second meeting, it's the second meeting in January.
Second meeting in January.
Date doesn't stand off to me, but that would be probably the third Tuesday in January.
Okay.
So, I think it lines up well.
Yeah.
Superintendent mid-year valuation usually is around that time as well, so there's a few things going on. I think it'd be a good time to check in about communication processes and procedures up to that point, since we spent time talking about it this summer. I think there'll be some more actions that will be taken by then, it'd be good to talk through and process that, get your feedback and-
So, if you can have Linda maybe coordinate with Dr. Allen and Mr. McCarthy some dates, and then share the dates with us, and we'll get back with the-
Great. So, keep an eye on your email, because I imagine that's how Linda will reach out. Just two more items. One, Julie Sniffin spoke to it during her last report, but the flyer did go out for our next Friends and Family University, which will be November 14th, so next week, here in the auditorium, from 6 to 8:00 PM. We have Courtney Lovell and Tom O'Brien here, both with an expertise, if you will, in the field of substance abuse. Courtney Lovell on a personal experience, and Tom O'Brien's the superintendent of Roxbury Schools. So, he'll, he served as, serves as the public school representative on the New York State Drug Task Force. So, both of them will be speaking, and then there's a couple of breakout sessions for parents, where they'll have the option to attend a breakout session on the rise in teen vaping or a hidden mischief program, which is things to look for in the home that may be indicators of substance abuse. So, it's a good program. We're fortunate to have the individuals who we have coming in. And again, that'll be November 14th from 6 to 8, and that went out to our district parents last week, I believe.
Can I ask a question on that, too? On the flyer, the Cove Care Center and the Prevention Council of Putnam are sponsoring that? Are they gonna have tables with information there, too?
I don't know if they'll have tables set up.
So, I had the opportunity to attend last year, and Cove Care sponsored the Hidden Mischief. It was very interesting. And in addition, they had tables and information, so I would assume it's gonna be a similar.
I was there last year, but I didn't see tables.
Yeah, upstairs. We, they were kind of spread out, they were in the library down here. I'm not sure of the setup, but-
I saw Courtney speak last year at the NISBA conference, and she, I mean, there wasn't a dry eye in the room. She's very compelling, and she tells a really heartbreaking but also very hopeful story. So, we're lucky to have her.
There we are. Lastly, I just had one add-on, Ms. Hammond. I want to just send congratulations out to our fall sports teams. We've had tremendous success, that keeps on rolling. Last weekend, last Saturday, I had the pleasure of sharing 200 miles in the car with Ms. Sniffin. We were like this, we're besties now.
Did you have a mixtape?
There was no mixtape. There were some poor choices in music, but we went to, we started out at Out and Park to watch our cross-country teams compete, both the boys and the girls. The boys are sectional champions. The girls don't actually have, while placing first, second, third, and fifth, don't have enough runners to qualify as a team-
Oh, really?
-for the sectional championship, although I'm pretty sure we would have won it if we did. So, great success there. We made our way up to, or over to Maia PAC High School to watch our football team compete in the sectional final. They won against Toccoho in a great game, so the boys are going on to the state competition, and they play next Friday. We then made our way down to Pace University to watch our volleyball team play. Tough loss, the girls' volleyball team, to a very tough Valhalla team. But they played well, they had a great season, so their season concluded. And then we made our way to the school foundation event back up in Colts Springs. So, a great day, though, for Hal Dean. school foundation event back up in Colts Spring, so, a great day, though, for Haldane. And in the background, out in Connecticut, our Model UN team, group, was competing, and Andrew, it's my understanding that you actually were recognized as, and I don't have the actual name of the recognition, it was for your delegation, can you speak to it?
Yes, so Haldane went to University of Connecticut, is this on?
Yeah.
Sorry, we went to University of Connecticut's 20th anniversary of their Model UN conference, after having about half of our team pull out because of sectionals, unfortunately, we had to find a lot of people last minute, so we weren't too sure about the status of the trip until about two or three days before, but it ended up being a huge success, everyone loved it, and of the 16 councils, we had two winners. Katrina Fia Senior won Best Delegate for Israel on the Counterterrorism Council, and then I won Best Delegate as India on the Refugee Council, so very successful weekend, and we're hoping to go back next year.
Right. While we're watching the volleyball game, we're getting texts from Mr. Sniffin about how our kids are doing at Model UN, so it was really outstanding, a great representation of our accomplishments on the athletic field and in the classroom as well, so congratulations, Andrew, we're very proud.
Thank you.
And that concludes my remarks.
Great, thank you. All good stuff, looking forward to the next competitions. Moving on to committee minutes, there, the Health and Safety from the October 15th meeting, and the Buildings and Grounds from the October 22nd meeting, they're there for our viewing.
Did our safety committee name get changed to Health and Safety Committee?
We had been referring to it as the Safety Committee, but when I looked back on the charge, it says Health and Safety Committee, so I started to revert back to Health and Safety Committee.
I like Health and Safety better, actually, I think it's more comprehensive.
It always was.
I think part of what has occurred is there's been so many discussions, and the focus of the committee has been on safety, that the health and part got dropped off, but the charge from the board is Health and Safety.
The minutes are labeled Safety, so we need, I think we need, if in fact, we need to, yeah, but I like Health and Safety better.
It's the Health and Safety Committee as the board has designated.
Okay, thank you.
And I remember attending those committees back in the day as Health and Safety, so.
Okay, yeah, good.
And Buildings and Grounds?
After, how do you say his name?
Nobiel.
Nobiel. Started, we were going to set up a time for the board to do the walkthrough, since we didn't do it at the beginning of the year, that's still on track to happen at some point.
Sure, thank you for reminding me, I'm happy to have Linda coordinate a time where she can work with your schedules, Nobiel's here, so I'm sure he'll be very accommodating of that, and find a time where the majority, at least the majority of board members can attend for a walkthrough.
We've often done it pre-board meeting.
Sure.
Maybe like pre-workshop meeting, where he's scheduled to be here for a workshop meeting, anyway.
Just, would next meeting be too soon, or?
I think that's up to him. That's a Monday, I mean, that's Monday, the 19th.
It'll be fine. Okay, I'll check with him, and then we'll confirm.
Thank you. And I think it'd be good, maybe, Anne can fill him in as to what we've done in the past on the walkthroughs, just so we have. Any communication from the public this time? Nope, nothing? Okay, moving on to information reports, these are the financial reports for us to view, and we will approve at the next meeting. Correspondence from Ms. Danielle Pack McCarthy, who has, who is very willing to work with Haldane, and as she has become the coordinator, I don't know her exact title for Phillips Town.
Prevention coordinator.
AC something, addiction.
And you know what, my, yeah, my, it's not opening up here, otherwise I know it was at the bottom, her title was at the bottom, but we're very thankful.
Addiction Resource Coordinator.
Addiction Resource.
ARC, that's right.
ARC. She's the Addiction Resource Coordinator for the town of Phillips Town, and Danielle has graciously always, you know, lent a helping hand here at Haldane, willing to continue to work with us, and we're very grateful, so, at one point, I think, towards the end of our workshop meetings, we were planning on having Danielle come in and speak as part of the, I can't think of the topic now, but it's one of the last ones, I know that.
Social emotional.
Social emotional, right.
Given the content of the Friends and Family University, is she engaged, or the town engaged in some way, shape, or form?
I'm not sure, but I know she was there last year, I'm not sure, but I'm sure she's aware, but I can obviously reach out to her as well, and just let her know what's happening. Moving on to consent agenda minutes, these are the minutes from the October 16th meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, these are the reports primarily from prior meeting, as well as the approval to declare two school bus vans, and the approval for the peace officer, special patrol officer agreement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Just a quick note on the SPO agreement, so I had signed the agreement for the SPO this summer, however, the board should act on the agreement to ratify my signature on there, so it should have come before the board, and upon reflection, as John started, I didn't recall, I recalled the school resource officer contract being acted upon by the board, but not the SPO contract, and so that's why it's on here tonight, as opposed to two months ago. So it's, I signed it, the agreement is legitimate between us and the county, but the board should ratify my signature, given that I went ahead and signed the document.
And just as a contractual question, so this, once ratified, this will be available through Board docs?
And we can put it on the website, too.
Yeah, no, but back to the conversation that we had, which is, it's there, it's just easier to get it, versus harder to get, but it's definitely there to begin with.
Was I totally crazy to think that SPO stood for School Peace Officer?
So in all of our documents last year that I see, we were, we were referring to it as such, however, in our agreement, and if you actually look at his badge, it's a Special Patrol Officer is the actual title.
So we were incorrectly referring to it, or is that like?
But that's not just us.
I think that terms are used synonymously, quite frankly, based on the other districts who use SPOs, they are often referring to them as School Peace Officers.
Okay, thank you.
However, Putnam County, in the contract, he is a Special Patrol Officer.
Because I know we spoke as Peace Officer, and I'm looking at the contract, and it's saying Patrol Officer, and I'm thinking, all right.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to match with what the contract says.
Right.
It's not just us, other school districts have the same.
His badge says Patrol Officer, and his card says Special Patrol Officer, so.
I wrote Peace Officer, too, so I'm really glad.
We can just go with SPO, and we're all good.
Whatever you want to call it. All right, so may I have a motion?
You say tomato.
Oh, did we, sorry, we had a conversation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Can we just talk about number one, it's the increase from .75 to 1.0, this was the position that we talked about last year during budget season, right, this was one of our cuts to balance things out, we felt like we didn't need the full-time teaching assistant position, we could decrease to .75, however, now we realize we need, we do need that 1.0 position, and so we're reinstating it, is that all correct?
I don't know the history of last year with respect to the position, it's my understanding we had a .75 to fill, however, based on increased student need, we now need essentially the services of a full-time employee.
Oh, so this isn't not, this is not then?
You're both correct.
Oh, okay.
Looking to Anne, just because there's some history there.
This is during budget development, we reduced a teaching assistant by .25, and now because of student enrollment, we need that .25 back.
Very good.
And the budget can support it.
What's the, what's the, what role is the assistant playing?
This assistant is at the high school, if I remember correctly, there, is it in the recommendation?
It's in the recommendation, if you open up the.
I'll find it, sorry.
Yes, it's for additional support for ENL students.
So we didn't have money for it in the budget, but we do have money in the budget?
Yes, because there were other items that we budgeted for that we haven't started yet.
So it's a flex, so we're going to be down .25 in the long term?
So as an example, we went a couple of months without a director of facilities.
Right.
That was budgeted for, but we were not paying anyone for those services, so that happens somewhat fluidly throughout the school year, and just as an example, I don't mean to interject, so when we have a need like this, which is at a much lower salary than what we would have paid a director of facilities, allows us to accommodate, and there's other positions similarly, not just director of facilities, that have not been filled, or weren't filled right away, or there was a lapse, that allow us to have some flexibility with, as needs come up through the school year.
Right, just, I just wanted to be clear, because that was a contentious thing, and when we were discussing budgets, where we were knocking out little bits and pieces.
But actually, if we remember, when we discussed special ed, we always said that item is very difficult to pinpoint, and that the needs shift dramatically, based on, it could be, you know, whatever the needs are, and that we had to keep that fluid, that number was a fluid number, so.
And I'm sorry, I lied it right over, I acted like I knew what the acronym stands for, what does ENL stand for?
English as a New Language.
A new language, okay, fantastic.
Formerly ESL.
I know, I was like, I know, ESL, okay, thank you.
So, that's the story with it. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
New business.
Okay, these are the CSC CPSC recommendations, the recommended action is be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, Committee on Preschool Special Education, and Section 504 Committee as presented.
May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion or comments?
Yeah, can I ask a question, just being somewhat new to this, how does this work? Because.
We're not allowed to discuss students, so obviously you see, there's only ID numbers there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we're not allowed to discuss in public a student's IEP or 504.
Certainly.
And we're not allowed to identify those students. We actually don't even know the recommendations, we're going on what the administrators and Dr. Benant feel are appropriate for these students.
What element, though, are you curious about?
Well, it's that, I totally get the, there's no conversation about students.
Right.
But it's interesting that we're approving things that I have no idea what the content is.
Well, I think in the backup.
Not that I don't trust you.
Right, you'll see student ID.
It identifies numbers, but it doesn't.
It doesn't say what the, it's literally just, this is the recommendation.
So.
Is it, is it a requirement of law that the board approves these?
Yes.
Okay, fine, great, good.
Because there's expenditures attached to them.
Sure.
If there's more information, you know, looking at, I've seen our recommendations, obviously, and I'm sorry, I don't have the backup right in front of me with my hard copy, so, sorry to peer over your shoulder as I'm looking at the backup to see how it's formatted, but I think that there, if there is additional information that the board would want, as long as it's not identifying information about the student, if it's, you know, program, so if a student has an approved 504 plan, or is receiving some sort of services through CSC or CPSC, related services such as speech and language, or special education services by a special educator, if there are questions regarding that level of detail, just to more familiarize yourself with it, we can coordinate the backup in a different way.
There have been times, too, that Anne has made a note, if one of the expenditures for a new, you know, a new student issue is something significant, you know, you know, this is going to cost us $50,000 more, or something.
Within the recommendations?
Yeah, she'll make a note, not in this, usually it's somewhere in executive content, if it's something really remarkable.
Okay.
So you can look for that.
Oftentimes, these are pre-schoolers, as you see them come up through the school year, who are eligible for something like a speech and language support.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Because they went through an evaluation, and we have a service provider who's already designated for providing that level of, more often than not, that's what is going on.
Totally makes sense, it was just an interesting structure of approval, in which you have no insight into what you're approving, but you're required to approve it anyways, and certainly we trust you and people making recommendations.
Well, and there's a whole process, they have to go before the Committee on Special Ed.
Yes, absolutely.
So before it reaches this point, there's a lot of evaluating going on.
Absolutely.
So we have to trust that the work of special ed directors, Committee on Special Ed, Dr. Benant, pupil personnel services, all come together and recognize this is what's needed.
And as a part of the budget development process, there should also be a report provided on special education specifically, that will drill down into the cost of services for preschool students, for in-district students, for out-of-district students. So there is, there does come a point routinely where we will drill down into what our spending looks like in special education as part of budget development.
And that certainly, and the other one would be, that would be interesting, and this is when you have a new director in place, it's like, how is this changing over time? What's happening to the availability and utilization of services and all that sort of stuff? It's very interesting.
In fairness to our new director, because they're likely going to be coming in right as we're starting budget development.
Yeah.
I don't want to overcommit them, you know, to a specific profile of report, but that's going to have to be a focus right away, but some of that takes a lot of time to get the historical perspective put together, so we'll see what we can do, although Selena Fisher and Bonnie Hart, our interims, have done some work on that already to help guide the process moving along.
Great, thank you, sorry to.
No, good questions, because that was actually an exact question that I had initially as well.
What am I saying yes to?
So, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any communication from the public?
I just wanted to make a note, Dr. Benant mentioned it, the Haldane School Foundation had an event Saturday night, John and I were there, Dr. Benant was there, Andre McHugh was there, they threw a great party, they always do, a big thank you to them for their work on behalf of our students, and a thank you to all of the community members, teachers, parents who were there donating money, and I don't know how much they raised, sometimes I have the number by now, 20?
28,000.
28,000. And I know that they had some earmarked initiatives, but it's impressive, impressive work that they do, so a thank you to them, and a thank you to everyone who contributes.
Karen Howell gave a good spiel for Soundsoo.
Yeah, I heard about that, too.
Yeah, he was very compelling.
We're going to have Noah go out and promote the budget this year, he did such a great job, I told him he earned himself another job.
Make a video about it.
So, great work, yes, absolutely, we're very grateful for the Haldane School Foundation. Okay, if there's no additional communication from the public, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. To the polls you go, if you have not voted in.